All right, it's one o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And the first thing is the approval of the agenda. I believe the board want to make a couple of changes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a change to move number five, Balsam West, to number one so they can get back to work. And on new business, number five, Caitlin Adams, not gonna be able to be here, so I'm gonna table that.
Okay. You good with that, Danny?
Yeah, second.
On the vote? So, those changes, the motion approved the agenda?
I could motion with approved changes to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from June 1st, 2022, Rick, what do you think? I'd approve the agenda for the June 1st meeting.
Second.
On the vote? All right, this time, we'll open up the floor to public comment. You better got the public comment. We have a motion to close the comment.
Motion closed.
Second.
On the vote? On old business, Mr. Hanson with Balsam West would like to address the board. You have the floor, Mr. Hanson.
Sure. Um, I want a jump in this, a photo that y'all can look at. I've been working with Michelle Shipwood. She had received or worked out a grant for the town Wi-Fi, for the town of Robbenville, and we've been working with her to set up the equipment and get y'all a wireless system set up for the town. It's like a mesh system. The easiest way to think of it is kinda like a spider web. It kinda just ranches out and connects to cover the whole specified area. In the photo, you'll see that's the majority of what the equipment looks like. That's actually the largest setup that anyone would have. And we do have some of it set up around parts of town right now, in some of the buildings that we've talked to company owners and stuff, and they've allowed us on their buildings. The reason I'm here today is just to get approval. Now, we may not need on any of the buildings, but we might, and so I just wanna do, address and get approval upfront for any of the buildings owned by the town that we may need to get on.
Okay. Mr. Hanson, how long do you need to have the equipment on the building, or?
Uh, that would be an agreement with the grant and Michelle. I'm assuming most grants, and of course, the equipment can stay there, because it's purchased, it's the town's equipment through that grant. So however long y'all see that you want to have the Wi-Fi service, then you can keep the equipment there. But for the most part, most of the grants typically are for five years, or at least five years. So at the end of the five years, it becomes whether the town itself wants to keep the Wi-Fi system or upgrade it, or do away with it, whatever at that point.
So we'd own it after five years?
You would probably own it before then, because through the grant, Michelle purchased the equipment with the grant funding. So I don't know how, whoever's in charge of that grant was her, maybe they own it, or the town owns it themselves. That'll be a question for me. Whoever, basically whoever we're doing the Wi-Fi setup for, I know she's been in charge of it, but if she's, you know, working for the town to do this, then yes, the town will be owning the equipment.
Any questions, Mr. Hanson?
After the five years, when the lease is up, who's responsible for the upkeep and some of the equipment?
Well, the upkeep, that, I mean, that could be worked out with us at that point. I don't see any reason why, if y'all decided, you know, not to keep it, that we couldn't continue to maintain and take care of the equipment. Yeah, I just, at that time, we can address that, and I wouldn't get much else.
But at this time, it would be no cost to the town, correct?
Yeah, yeah, there's no cost to the town, as far as I'm aware, because all the equipment, everything was purchased through the grant. The only thing that may be a cost to the town, and it's so insignificant that I don't think it really matters. The equipment, if we place it on a building of the town, we would need power, and we'd tie in the power. But that equipment, it really doesn't use much power at all. I mean, it won't, it won't even add a dollar to your monthly power bill.
Okay.
May I be heard?
Yeah.
I think Wi-Fi's important. That's not the issue. We do, I hope you all do, it's needed. But it's public property, and every use of public property needs the resolution adopted in a public hearing. And so it would be the resolution in August, in the public hearing in September. More importantly, I have about eight items here that you have to know. And so we need to know who owns it. And Michelle Shipwood working for the town, under this grant, purchased it in the town's name. Who owns the equipment? That would answer a lot of questions, just, and you can't utilize public property. The envelope is 10 years, and that's really pushing it. But if it's your equipment, and you're paying the power, and you bought it, I mean, that's important to know. We're not, we don't have to jump through these hoops. But I thought, the information I have is Balsam West's equipment wanting to utilize public property to improve Wi-Fi. So that's very important. Is it our equipment? We're gonna put it on our own buildings? Or is it Balsam West's property, and they want to put it on our buildings and hook into our power? So either way, you need to know that.
Yeah, so we need to ascertain exactly who owns it.
We need to ascertain it quickly. If it's not ours, it'll be September. If it is the town's equipment, and I say our, I mean, the town's equipment, that's very different than the information I have. So, and I thought, the information I have, Balsam West would be maintaining it. It was their equipment. We just need, I needed to determine from Balsam West the exact things. So now it sounds like we're not sure who owns it. Balsam West is saying they don't own it.
Balsam West does not own the equipment. The equipment would be either owned by the town, or by the, for the first part of the grant, it may be owned by the state until that time period is up. But once it's up, then...
Let's just get the grant. We just need to get the grant.
Okay.
And do it, do it wrong.
All right, I'll just try to ascertain exactly who the owner is.
Yeah, if we could get a copy of the grant, it would be all in there.
Yeah, all right. So the board wants to just wait till we get all the information on it and table it, or?
Yeah, I make a motion we table it till we ascertain who owns and maintains, or retain on property, or property obtained, or then...
No worries.
I make a motion we table it till we get a copy of the grant.
Second.
All right, on the vote? All right, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson. All right, next on the old business is, how much the former board member for the RTA, since the resignation of Mr. Long Matts, Kevin Open, is that correct?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Have you by your mind, or?
Not yet, no. Do you?
No.
Do you, Kenneth?
I don't, 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 I don't.
Citizens in the city limits, the business owners in the city limits. And that pretty much sums it up, you know? Anyone who's of interest to help with the RTA.
There's a formula. Y'all had a, it's been about 10 years since you got your RTA authorization in the General Assembly. You just know there's a formula, and it's one-third of the members, I mean, this is in your special act. One-third of the members are affiliated with businesses that collect the taxes.
Yeah, okay.
One-half of the members are persons who are active in the promotion of travel and tourism. And that, all these definitions are in your statute, your special act. The town finance officer is an ex officiating member. And the mayor is also an ex officiating member, and so those two don't go. So 83, according to your special act, 83.3% of the members must be in that two-part category. So four members must be in the form, and then the rest can be those promoting the town of Andrews, or part of the town of Andrews.
Robbinsville.
Wait, Robbinsville.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, no, you don't want the... Like Robbinsville, and it's sort of like the third category.
Yeah. So we just, we'll table out the next meeting, or find somebody that can rest it?
When we be able to talk to someone, we'll put it before you.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we table it till RTA gets some applicants, and we'll bring them back up.
Maybe by next month. Second, yeah.
All right, on the vote? And next up, someone you want to address the board about?
Well, Taco asked to put that on the agenda. But I'll be happy to address it, unless Debbie likes it.
Taco asked to put it on the agenda?
He said it should have been on old business, because it has not been resolved. There hasn't been a tourism director hired since our tourism director resigned in February.
Okay.
Okay, so the mayor had told me this week that Debbie, the chairman of the board, would like to be put on the payroll for tourism. And I explained to the mayor that we weren't able to do that unless her board hires her as the tourism director. What they did vote on several months ago was to pay her for the hours' work during the interim period, until there has been a tourism director hired, and she's been paid for those hours.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
These were given to me back in January, 1st of February. Time cards for me to fill out, time that I had done stuff, all the different things that I had going on to get paid for. So Sonia printed these off for me, and then I gave them to her, and then she still wouldn't pay me. So then she said that the board needed to sign off on all of my time cards, and the board said that they did want me in as intern, and we did not want to hire anyone until we got our policy fixed up, because there was things in the policy that needed to be changed. So we're working on that, too. That's why there hasn't been anyone hired in. We had some applicants, but we didn't want to hire them in until we got the policies worked out to where it was clear for them what their job was. And then I turn in more of them. She gives me a check out of the thing, but it doesn't have taxes or anything out of it. And as an intern, if you are the intern, RTA director, should you not have taxes held out, too, if you are hired in for that position? Just curious, Ellen.
You're the interim?
Sonia?
You're the interim?
Yes. Sonia told me that I had to fill out a 1099.
Well, you wouldn't be filling out a 1099, Debbie.
Well, you told me that you would not hold taxes out. You said that I was not going to be hired. And then even on this last set of...
I'd like to ask the board, please, I was...
Time cards that she gave me, she said...
I can't hear both people.
Since you are not a town employee, these are time sheets only for town employees. But she's the one that printed them out and gave them to me, and I've been filling them out. I've been turning in my time, and it's like, I still haven't got paid, Kenneth, for, from all the way up in January. I haven't got paid my mileage. I haven't, and that's not a whole lot. That's only about six trips, just to different places to pick stuff up. I've done everything that I can to make this successful for the town. Sean wants me to do a 5K, but they won't allow me to use the guys. So there I am, stuck with that. But I do think that what I have done up until last night, I should be paid for. Now, there's only one of you today. It takes two, takes three of us aldermen's to make this work. I don't feel like I, I probably, I don't know, Ellen's probably got the logistics with that. I probably can't vote on that. But we are the boss, so to speak. What we do say needs to go, and just one can't make it go. Not, not just one. Even if it was not me, I would still be saying that employee needs to be paid for the job that they've done. Even if this wasn't me, if it was you, I would be saying this employee needs to be paid for what they've done. If it was one of these guys, I would say these employees need to be paid for what they've done. It's just another hoop that I'm having to jump through, and whether it's a, it's something that's supposed to be done, or whatever, I've done it. I don't know what else to do. I even took the right steps. I even asked Sean to find out. Now, at one point, there was a check in there for me, wrote to me, for someone that had done a job for the town. I found out about that, talked to Sean, the next day. That check was changed and wrote out to that other person. But now this, he's just told me, I'll talk to her. And now here we are in a meeting, trying to figure it out, still.
I want your vote on that.
I just want the board to realize that Debbie asked for me to reimburse her for that particular vendor, and that's what I did. And then she must have changed her mind. She called the mayor to just make it out to the vendor. I have documentation. I can show you.
I didn't say to make it to me.
I have documentation.
Any vendor that needs paid, that does their job, needs paid. I don't wanna pay them. It's not my place to pay them.
Maybe Debbie can't vote.
No, I know I can't vote.
It's a benefit of, but, okay. Debbie is the interim tourism director. That's not an issue. Payment of the interim tourism director should not be an issue.
Should not?
Should not be an issue.
Why? Why should it not be?
I mean, it's not an issue to get paid as interim director, because of the work you've done.
I've not got paid?
I know, but that, I'm saying that you are interim director, the town has that expectation, and you were to be paid for it. That's not an issue. Whether you've been paid, something else has gone wrong. Next, whether you get a 1099, or taxes taken out, is a town decision. So that's a town decision in operating the tourism authority. So, someone may not be a happy camper if they get a 1099. They may not be a happy camper if they get taxes taken out, and would rather have a 1099. But that's still a board decision. So being interim director and getting paid are not an issue. If, then the board needs to decide, because I don't recall that being addressed, whether it was a 1099 or taxes taken out. And the person getting that may not have a choice. That's, that's an issue, is, is the town doing a 1099, or taxes? Okay, so, I don't know why your interim director hadn't been paid. And she can't vote on whether it should be a 1099, or a tax, so that can go over. But if you, whatever the expectation was when you appointed her interim director, then that payment can be made, whether it's taxes out, or a 1099. It's a 1099, you just, that's the way you...
But if you're on a time sheet, are you not an employee? I've been given time sheets, and I've filled out every time sheet. Is that not considered an employee? And then all of a sudden, it says time cards are only for town employees. Well, why am I even filling out a time card, then, if I'm not a town employee?
That's good.
How do I get my time? You're the one that gave these to me. You're the one that told me that I was supposed to fill them out, and...
So, back in February, when the previous tourism director resigned, Debbie said that she would like to do that. She was gonna address her board. And so we, I explained to her, if they hire her, hire you as the director, or the intern, you will need to fill out the time sheets. If they do not, I suggest that you ask for more, because you will receive a 1099. And that is exactly what she did, and that is exactly what happened. And I'm not able to put anyone on the payroll until that board votes to hire that person. Only thing they voted was, these exact words, voted to pay for hours' work during the interim period until they hire a tourism director. I can't help that she didn't follow my directions.
So then why didn't you pay me for these? Why, why am I having to fill this stuff out?
You're not supposed to fill those out. If you would read the board, if you would read that board, the note that's on it, it says this, you're looking at it. Can you read it to the board?
Yeah, don't care a bit to. But who made these for me?
Okay, I'll say it again. Does the board understand that I gave her two options? She chose the second option, I suppose, because...
I chose what option? For a 1099? No, I didn't. You didn't even ask me.
It's not my decision. It's your board's decision.
But you were the one that said you need to do a 1099, regardless of all of that.
Yeah, the board had two choices, and they chose a 1099, because they didn't hire you. They didn't hire you. They voted to pay you for hours' work, and that's exactly what happened. You were given a check.
Hours' work, so?
So what you need to do is give us an invoice for your total hours' work, and you will be paid, as long as it's been approved by two of your board members, which is what your board has chosen to do. And if you turn in your mileage, and you have two board members approve it, which has not happened yet, then you will also be paid. I don't get to make the rules. I only have to follow them.
You make the rules.
I do not make the rules. I don't get to vote?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Sonia. You are just still an employee. I am a town alderman.
I'll put that in there.
Yeah, it's on, it's on there.
The other thing, you are one of the RTAs authorized by the General Assembly. And you control the administration of it. You control the receipts. You have the definition of tourism-related expenditures. You have all the appointments, and then you have these rules of procedure. And they've been about 13 years old, and that's what I hope...
That's what we are working on.
Because I don't think you should, you know, you need to pay someone, whether it's 1099, or taxes taken out. You decide that. But this needs to be redone, because some of it, there's some conflict in here about, like the chairman. The board of aldermen, the chairman of the authority is the board of aldermen. It's on there. So that's the chairman of this, okay?
Acting, yeah, that's what I was up until there.
Okay, then, the chair is to conduct all meetings. What, is there a, then you hire a director, subject to the personnel policies of the town, but is the director an employee of the town?
Yes.
They were.
Well, that's not clear in here.
Yes, their IRS tax ID says they are an employee of the town.
Of the town, the...
Yeah, they were hired by the town board of aldermen, too, until recently.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's what, that's what needs to be clarified in here. It says they're subject to personnel policy for the town, but it doesn't say they're an employee of the town.
Yeah, IRS says they are.
Okay, so that needs changing, and that'll clarify payment as well, so, okay. So, that's good enough, I mean, and then that can be clarified in here.
Okay, so, paying, paying the chair, is that, the town pays that, or the RTA pays?
RTA pays that. It's a non-paying board normally, but at the last minute meeting, the tourism board voted to pay the chair to attend the meeting, but not to pay the other board members. Which is Debbie's.
Well, I don't know, we're kind of at a standstill. I can't stand alone vote.
No, it'll be, yeah.
So, but I mean, we do need to get her paid on that, too.
And that's already been authorized.
I'll fix up the invoice now.
Okay.
Is there a certain type of invoice that I need? Is there a certain qualification of that invoice that will call it a legitimate thing? Or is it just writing it down on a piece of paper gonna be efficient enough?
She needs to use that.
Yeah. What kind of invoice do you need from her? Would it just be a handwritten invoice, or does it make be an actual?
I would assume Debbie would have her own way of doing her own invoices, as any other vendor would.
Does it need to be a separate invoice for the travel?
That is a mileage reimbursement form that you've already filled out. As I said, you already, you just need to have it approved, and then that can be paid, but you...
I've not, I've not been given a mileage form to fill out.
I mean, you're, sure, put it on the same invoice, sure. Your board's paying for both of it. But just remember, as I had stated in that note that you were getting ready to read, is that you'll have to separate it from the prior year to the current year, because the last amount of hours you turned in included both July and June.
Oh, so the two days in July that I worked don't need to be in on it?
Needs to be on its own invoice, because it's a new...
Didn't know that.
It's a new year.
Didn't know that. I'll try that hoop this time.
Any further discussion on that? All right, next on drill business, we've got a budget ordinance for the CDVG grant. All right, next on drill business, we've got a budget ordinance for the CDVG grant. And that's for the lines on Lower Street and some of it's on North Line. Some of it goes off what, to Poker Road and Ford Street.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll see. Okay, next on the agenda is, I've got some quotes for the hometown of Ronnie Mills signs and also included some possible pictures that we'll have on the sign.
Where's the sign in Dublin?
I was thinking one each entrance right down here at the storage buildings. One coming down Sweetwater and one where they come up from Papa's Pigs and one out, and come in from Milltown. So we'll replace the one that's already... No, these are going to be separate.
How big of a sign?
I was thinking four before.
So are you getting a local artist or are you just...
This gentleman that made these is from Andrews. He lives, his business is in Andrews. And the other quote is from a gentleman in Nashville. So far, that's the only piece you're following.
I don't see the quote, is that, oh, is it these, okay?
This one, Deb, is from the guy in Nashville. And this is from the gentleman in Andrews that made these drawings for.
Which one do you want? I like the second one. Pictures, bars, the picture.
Okay. Yeah, I do too, Smoking Mountain Rain. This is from the gentleman in Andrews, Smoking Mountain Signs, we have to bring.
I'll make a motion to approve five signs in Asheville for a grand total of $715.67.
Well, that's for each one.
That's for each one?
Yeah, this guy, his grand total is $1485 for four of them.
That's the way it looks.
Yeah, see, it's three, 362.50 each.
I just read his name wrong.
Yeah.
Can I strike that motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to pay Mitch Briggs the cost for the signs.
And that's going to be the Smoking Mountain Rain.
I like that one.
Yeah, I do too. All right, all right. Next on the agenda is, Mel Duff and John's not here. And move on to number seven. Comp time policy should be in your packet if you've got time to look it over.
Can I say something? I'm not sure I like this statement right here. They don't want to refuse to sign for lunch. I don't agree with that. Because we're making them sign for lunch that they don't even take at a right time. If we had overtime, if we had an overtime policy, would that not take care of all of this? That way we wouldn't have to be dealing with comp time and making them sign off on something that could cause them to not be employed anymore. That way we're doing away with having to... How do we, how do we, how do we have a supervisor sign off on something?
Are you looking at unauthorized work?
I'm looking at process, procedure, administration. Says prior approval by the employee supervisor before it is worked. Well, I mean, most of the comp time is when there's water leaks and stuff. How can you give them prior approval to it? If, I mean, if the water plant calls, then are they supposed to call the supervisor and get prior approval to go fix a water leak that's got water running out in the streets?
The thing with that stuff is it's, you can expect unexpected. There's no way that they're probably prior approval on any of that. And I just, the time that it says here, eighty hours. And in the government here, it says it's 240 hours.
What page are you on? Oh, okay, I see.
There's a whole bunch of things here. Trial approval of the supervisor. I mean, we document everything, but there's no way to do it. There's no way else when something's going to be ready for it. I mean, that's what the statute's for when you write it down. If I sign it, you know, I'm saying that they work and I'm approving it. So there's no way to figure that out. There's several things in here that, I mean, there's no way.
This just won't revisit to us if they can change some of that.
Yeah, well, I think it needs to be and...
We looked at it at the last board meeting and I just had a couple of questions like, do we want the effective date July 1, 2023 for... For some reason, I thought that was changed. I had it marked the water plant employees will be affected July 1, 2023.
That's right.
I didn't, I thought we addressed that.
We did. And we explained there was an issue at the water plant. They need a year to resolve their issue.
And just when you do review it, unauthorized work is the very last. Just unauthorized work will not be compensated. That's the first sentence. And my recommendation is the next... Was to delete the may or may not. That just sets up problems. We have one supervisor saying, well, you know, we just don't need may or may not. Unauthorized work will not be compensated. And then unrecorded hours. Worked at home. I think, again, that's a supervisor deciding if that was really done at home. I just think we need another paragraph on if you're working from home.
Okay.
It puts the supervisor in a situation to say you work from home, he didn't. And in that one, you talked compensatory time. If you've got a leak and you've got, put somebody on the road right away. Supervisor needs to know, not prior approval, but if the employee, or soon thereafter, needs to let the supervisor know about working the leak.
We can revisit it.
So it's not...
I'm going to make a motion that we revisit this at a later time. I might make a few changes on the way it's worded.
So we're tabling it?
Yeah, I'm on tablet.
I second that.
Further on business. Moving on to new business. I may have said I have the drainage line down on Ford Street on the Collins property. It's been completed. It was completed at the end of last month. Sonia, you got the floor for the final today.
Thank you. So first thing you have in front of you is your budget versus actual. That's for the end of June 30th, the end of our year. This is not a final that you see in front of you because I'm still closing out the year. It does include most of your encumbrances, so it is pretty good numbers to say that we have not gone over budget on any funds or departments. I will be bringing you the final after the next board meeting for the June 30th. At the end of the tax year, at the end of the fiscal year, we had a tax collection rate of 98% at the county. That makes me and everyone else very happy. That's a good collections rate. We had our CDVG monitoring audit last week. And I have to say, me working through my lunch hour for the last year has paid off. Since this was extra work on top of my full-time job, I've worked really hard to get this accomplished. CDVG grants are not simple. And we had no findings. So I wanted to be sure and let the board know that we had no findings for our first phase of our CDVG monitoring audit. We had our auditors, our new auditors come in and do our pre-audit. They gave us several changes that we needed to know to make, as I have addressed for the board, to avoid scope of limitation. I hope that we will be able to do that. As you know, as the clerk of the board, I'm also supposed to keep your ethics certification on file and I've received everybody's but one. So I'd ask that you could give me a copy of that for your file and for my file. I wanted the board to know that we spent $82,470 last year on Duke Energy. We spent a lot of money on power, the solar plant, the water plant. And a couple of years ago, we had a Duke representative in and he said there are programs for solar panels, the grant programs that are available. And I think I would like to request the board if they would be, like, to look into something like that. If we could save and maybe even make more power, $82,000 would really go a long ways. We have several plants that we could put solar panels on property. So I would hope, if it was the board's will, that they would have someone look into that. That's all I have for the day, thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. All right, next on the agenda is Ms. Gross from Towneburg, San Tito.
Hi, thank you for having me. I brought with me paper. Let me hand that to each of you. I apologize, I'm a little shaky. I had food, my husband and I had food poisoning over the weekend and I had to go to the tour and sit in and get some. It's not COVID though. I took a COVID test just to make sure on some. No, not feverish, it's just very, very nauseous and not fun. So forgive me if I stutter a little bit. What I handed you is a copy of, this is our water mapping system. It's pitiful. And we have roughly about five miles in the town. We started looking into getting a machine and a gentleman came out from, where was he?
U.S. Radar.
U.S. Radar came out and demonstrated a couple of machines for us. And the one that we were interested in, this looks like a push lawnmower. And in conversations with Scott Camp is our town technician. And in conversation with him, he says, gee, Robbinsville just purchased one of those. So what I'm asking for consideration, to save our town some money of having to purchase one and maybe help you guys out too with some funds. Can we come together and possibly consider a lease agreement or some type of borrowing it, whatever, how you want it. We'll make it, you know, on paper, we'll sign it. I'll bring it before my board and ask them to agree with. So that we could use your machines during late fall winter months and Scott Camp would be trained on it and he would do the mapping. And we would have a precise idea of where our water pipes are. And as far as leak detection, I realize you need to keep that for your leak detection. I'm reassuring myself that if we know where our pipes are and we get a leak, we'll know where to start looking. But I wondered if there was some consideration you can give us, kind of come up with some kind of payment idea that I could bring back to my board to see if we can co-partner on this machine. So that's what I have here. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
All right.
Scott, do you want to say something? You're welcome to.
No, I think that's about it.
I don't expect an answer now. I mean, give it some time. It's an expensive machine, you just can't say sure.
Yeah, we're looking into it, Ms. Gross.
Completely. And if you choose not to, I understand that.
All right. I appreciate you coming in here.
I appreciate you having me, having us.
Next on the agenda, number four is Rivers Edge Treehouse. I see Mr. Mortimer here.
You see Mrs. Mortimer.
Mr. Mortimer can address the board.
He had a, he had a daughter's appointment that got rescheduled, so we, to stand in. So we have Rivers Edge Treehouse before and I'm here about a water bill that we got. Our water bills typically run less than 8,000 consumption. And the current water bill we have has 57,270 gallons or whatever it is you guys are monitoring. And that's just obviously not normal. That's, that's five months' worth of water bills. And we don't have a leak. We checked, we had our guy come out and look. We have no running toilets. I can assure you that if we had a running toilet, a guest would have notified us about it because those are annoying and you can hear them. It's not a big space. Our occupancy for the time period was pretty much the same as the previous year's time period. Apples to apples. And it was 78.8. And for this time period this year, it's 57,000. So I'm just here to ask if... So I'm just here to ask if there's any way you can give us some relief on this water bill because we don't, we didn't have a flood, we didn't have a pipe break or anything like that. And, you know, I'm not one hundred percent convinced that there's not a problem with the meter. I mean, I, I don't have an answer and I don't, we've called the town and talked to folks and nobody has an answer either for why it would be like this when there's, I mean, that's an awful lot of, that's fifty thousand more gallons than we ordinarily use each month. We should have seen water running somewhere and there just wasn't.
We monitor, um, Sherry had one of those to go out and get a read every day. From my understanding, I don't have to talk about her, but there really haven't been any, you know, more high usage or anything. As far as the meter going back, it's a compound meter. And what that is, it's got a high side and a low side. Like, um, on the low side, it would detect, uh, smaller things such as, uh, flushing the toilet or washing your hands. The higher end would be, um, I'm assuming fire or possibly washing the car or something like that. And as far as them going bad, um, I've never seen one to just read high. Usually they quit working, they don't read anymore. But obviously, I mean, anything, anything can tear up. Um, I, I have no idea, um, what was going on. The only thing I could even think of, uh, would be a hot toilet hanging up. And then when you use it again, it cleared out, but, um, I couldn't say that.
Yeah, but wouldn't it have to be, I mean, fifty thousand gallons?
It, um...
Over normal.
It's, uh, there's a chart in here on the wall, just a little pinhole. In the course of a, a month or a few days, it's thousands of gallons. It is insane how much water, um, will go through such a tiny hole. Um, even if it's leaking in the back of the toilet, it goes over the, uh, the pipe. And sometimes you can hear it, most of the time you can, but sometimes you can't hear it, but I can't say that's what it was.
Right, well, that's the thing, nobody can say what was wrong. I mean, and it just, it's weird and, you know, I mean, it's an eight hundred dollar bill as opposed to a hundred and fifty.
We're monitoring it, but it went in time, so it was obvious not, not a leak. And, uh, what's his name, Doug, he came to talk to us about it. Cause we were there for about a week solid checking it out. And, uh, he mentioned that a lot of people were washing their vehicles, so...
But that happens all the time. It happens every month. They, they all have a hose, they all have, you know, some people wash their cars, some people don't, but somebody's washing their car. I mean, it's, it's consistent all the time. I mean, if you look back for the whole seven years or eight years, however many years we've been open, we've never had an eight hundred dollar water bill.
I, I've kind of looked this over for the last, since it come up. And, you know, like I said, these guys went out and monitored the meter and this is highly unusual for your account. I, I would be willing to give a leak credit on that if you was willing to give us, you both leak credits to cover this amount of water, which means for credit finder of the year, if you have a leak, it's just...
Right, I understand.
I would be willing to do that.
Yeah, I second that motion. I know that there has to be something odd that has happened.
It's unusual.
I mean, like, we occasionally will pressure wash, but we do that before we open, which would have been in April. And not, not in May, you know? And we didn't, but we didn't even do that this year. We didn't pressure wash this year. And it's, it's just been normal. It's been normal operating with a normal amount of guests doing the normal things. So whatever you can do, I would greatly appreciate it.
So you're good with that, Mr. Mortimer?
Yes, the two, the two leak credits go toward this and then just really watch the...
Just tell me what to pay, I'll be happy to pay.
He made the motion second.
Well, that'll be addressed with Sherry.
She's coming in.
Thank you. So will she, will Sherry call us with a note?
She probably can figure it out.
Yeah, just talk to her, she's in that.
Okay, so it's a, it's a two week, what is that, you said?
Two lakes.
Two, two weeks, right, okay. Thank you, thank you so much.
I have one more thing I forgot to address about.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gross.
When I was talking about the CDVG grant, I was, I need to make sure that the board is aware that regarding the fair housing requirements for the CDVG grant, the town in town is removing land use ordinance. And instead, we will, the town will be looking into additional low-income housing. So it's just something that needs to be discussed at some time. There's a lot of, of requirements. We went out and I went out to four locations and put some fair housing pamphlets in our community. So if you decide any discussions you want to make on, in the future, in the near future about low-income housing options.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Guess we got something for close session?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, cause I can't make a motion. All right, we've come out of close session, no, uh, we have any further business? No businesses. All right, um, need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, make, I'll make a motion with Karen Lathan.
Second.
Meeting adjourned at two forty.